So, I'm going to call the meeting to order and suggest to make it clear for everyone because we have members on the phone. If we do take a vote on anything, then we will need to do a roll call if there's a disagreement. Is that your understanding as well, Bill or Cameron?
Yes, indeed.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know that we will be voting on anything tonight, but just in case. So, just to look at reviewing and approving the agenda. So, the, one of the items on the agenda tonight was the City Council workshop, and I anticipate that we're going to be putting that off tonight. And so, really, we're just going to be talking about cities' response to COVID-19. There was an email that was circulated to everyone just prior to this council meeting coming together tonight. So, that was an email from Cameron at 5:21 today, and I think that is going to sort of lay out what will mostly go through. And then, I also, I don't see on the agenda any opportunity for public comment, but assuming that, you know, since Stephen Whitaker is there, I assume he would like to say something. And so, I would love to, you know, add that, you know, item on to, if in case there's any other, you know, comments from the public. Does that sound like an okay agenda to everyone?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Stephen, what is your thought? If you, you know, do go through the regular drill, your name, where you live, and also try to keep it to him.
He's passing, for now.
Oh, he's passing, okay. Great. All right, so, okay, so moving on. So, for this part, does everybody have the memo?
Yes.
Yes, I have it.
I just emailed it out to all of you.
If anyone doesn't, you know, please speak up, but otherwise, Bill or Cameron, I might, I'm going to turn it over to you to walk it through this, if that makes sense to you all, otherwise, I'm happy to do it.
Yeah, so that's great. What we thought we would do tonight is walk through, the memo is basically in three parts, or at least two parts. One, to talk about what we've done already, or are doing. Two, some suggested actions that we think the council could take tonight, if they'd like. And then, I think the third part of the meeting would be for some brainstorming from the council as to other things you'd like us to look at for future meetings. And we do have one more member of the public, Adrian Brownlee is here now as well. So, I'm going to have Cameron walk through the memo, since she drafted it, but we'll both be offering comments as we go through.
All right, so, to keep you guys fully informed and to make sure that the public understands the sort of full-to-date response that the city has taken in response to coronavirus, I'm just going to walk through this memo. Regarding closings and remote access, in order to continue to provide core services to residents, the city did limit access to its public buildings. We closed all offices in City Hall, except for by appointment, accepting the city manager's office, which remains open normally. We've required the city council meetings continue as scheduled, but also, we are communicating remote call-in options to interact with council and the public. We will probably next week have a little bit more advanced options. Hopefully, we'll get you all on a screen next time. Other city facilities, such as the senior center, rec center, the garage, the water treatment plant, wastewater, police, and fire are currently closed to the public. And then, we've asked our committee members to either cancel any non-vital meetings where no decisions needed to be made, or have them by remote access. So, just so everyone knows, staff has to be on-site, or a member of a committee has to be on-site during those committee meetings, just so if the public does want to attend, they can attend in person. We've also canceled all of our events and programming, or we've either, well, or we've postponed them for further notice. So, we're also to address any concerns about the continuity of our operations. We have all been working on and updating and enacting our continuity of operations plans. These ensure that we maintain our internal capacity to provide our residents their core services. In addition to that, departments are working really hard with other jurisdictions to create mutual aid, support, and agreements, specifically our wastewater and water plants, just to make sure that we have shared, trained staff between all jurisdictions to support each other. City staff has also, as we've said before, increased our frequency of scheduled cleaning. The senior center and the rec center have also hired on a part-time worker to help them clean that facility, because we know that that is a vulnerable population. We also want to ensure everyone that our city employee benefits are, you know, bolstered during this time. Our individual department directors are allowing their work, their employees to work from home, if their work permits it, and other social distancing options. If an employee is formally quarantined by their doctor, they will be paid administrative leave for those two weeks away from work. We are also not letting our staff run out of sick time for COVID-19-related illnesses, and they can borrow sick time, so they will be paid the whole time they're out for that illness. We're also working on implementing a childcare option for city staff, depending on guidance from the state, so that we can continue to provide core services to the residents of Montpelier. We are looking pretty deeply at the budget impacts of the situation. We understand that we're probably going to lose a lot of our local options tax, from hotels, the meals--
Rooms, meals, and alcohol.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. So, we're also looking at those projections and what that's going to mean for the city budget. We're also looking at how we determine our financial standing and opportunities for cost savings. So, if that includes projects, hiring, et cetera, we're really looking at how we can curtail any costs. I also want to say how we've been communicating during this time. We have updated our website to have a front page button that directs people to sort of a clearinghouse, we've been calling it, of information regarding official sources for COVID-19 information, as well as community resources, such as volunteer opportunities. So, we've gotten quite a few locally-run and advocated groups that are doing really good work, and we want to make sure that people can get connected to them. We're also updating our front porch forum and Facebook as often as possible. We've also been in constant contact with our state and area partners to make sure that we're up to date on any best practices for this response. This also includes outreach to our churches and food pantries to offer any guidance and connect them to volunteer networks. We also want the public to know that we have a lot of online payments and services options. You can pay quite a few things online through our website, like property taxes, water bills, dog license fees, et cetera. We also have quite a few online city services that you can access at any time, including parking ticket appeals, birth, death, and marriage records, and other services. We know that this illness is really affecting the vulnerable population, so we wanted to address that briefly. The senior center's feast or meals-on-wheels program is really a top priority for us. We've transitioned into making all of those meals to-go, and are always looking for volunteers to help deliver meals, but they have really been working on their contingency planning and feel very comfortable where they're at right now. We also know that the police department is closed, because it is our emergency operations center, and so that really disrupts our 24/7 bathroom access, even though people can be buzzed in there, we know that is a barrier, so we wanted to address that. By putting two accessible PortaJohn units out in areas of the city, we'll have one behind City Hall in the parking lot there, and an accessible unit also behind the senior center. The one for the City Hall lot should be delivered tomorrow, and the other one, at the latest, should be early next week. Our rec department is doing a lot to try to help our community stay healthy mentally and physically. They're putting together a really great list of activities that people can do while still socially distancing themselves from each other, but should still be able to be active. And they're also cleaning out any of our external hard-surface recreation facilities, like our outdoor basketball courts, so that people can still have recreation options. We also talked to the high school, and they are providing breakfast and lunches for children to pick up at the loading dock. And our rec department will be working with the school's food services director to ensure that lunches are still being distributed, and if they need any help, we can help them. Regarding the most vulnerable population that we have in our community, the homeless, the Washington County Homelessness Response Team has been pulled together, and our Your City Council's homelessness task force is working with them. The representatives on this--
Recreation facilities, like our outdoor basketball courts.
Other representatives on this team are the State Department of Public Safety and Department of Health, the Central Vermont Hospital, Washington County Mental Health, Capstone, and Good Samaritan Haven. They're leading local response and have created response groups focusing on congregate recovery sites, medical support, transportation, food access, street outreach, volunteer management, and training opportunities. So, the Washington County Response Team is also working with the state's Health and Human Services to make sure that the state's EOC is getting real-time information. They're also working with the Office of Economic Opportunity to open up some pathways to getting motels and hotels for folks, so they don't have to stay in the shelter. Locally, Good Samaritan is working really hard on lowering the concentration of folks in the shelters to get to that 10 limit, and have found alternate shelters for many, including hotels and motels, and, in one instance, an empty-area college door. So, that sort of brings us to the place where we were looking for potential action items and input from council.
Could I just really quickly make a couple corrections? Just because I know that the press is probably listening, and I don't want the correct information to go out. In terms of clerk function, it mentions dog licensing fees and business license online renewal system. Those are both limited--
Can't hear who's talking.
Okay. The, just for information, a couple corrections from the clerk's office. It talks about dog licensing fees and business license online renewal system. Both are limited, and both deadlines are off until further notice, which has been pretty typical of clerk's offices, so we're doing that too. So, we will not be looking for the dog license renewals or the business license renewals until a later date. Also, the birth, death, and marriage records we have, it's not 2012 forward, we have them back and available to look at online to about 1907.
Well, I recommend that we update our website.
That's on the website?
Yes, it is.
Oh. Not my part of the website.
Yes, so we'll make sure it gets changed. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about city services?
Of course.
So, I just want to make sure that it's really clear, particularly, you know, for members of the public and to ourselves, that particularly during a time when businesses are, many of them will be closed, that we will continue to have police presence downtown, you know, anticipating, you know, just knowing that there was an increase in vandalism in Middlebury, and, you know, just want to make sure that people know that the police are still out, and actually, I'd love to encourage businesses, if they can, to keep the lights on, at least even on the outside of their buildings. But I assume, obviously, that's correct, right? That our police presence is not any less.
Yes, that's correct. Chief Ficus is here, if you'd like him to address the issue, but in fact, his directive has been to be even more visible than even normal, to get people out and about in the community as a prevention message, but also, we're here to help in whatever ways we can, and we're looking at other ways just to have city officials out, available for people. But definitely, the police presence is going to be continued and expanded.
Okay.
As long as--
I think I need to address that. Sorry, go ahead.
I said as long as there's healthy staff, sufficient healthy staff.
Yeah. Fair enough. Any other comments on current city services?
I'd just add, and we've talked about this before, but just to repeat, you know, we are working with groups, like Cameron mentioned, the County Homeless Response Services and others, and trying to keep as many resources as we can. We are, you know, really focused on maintaining core services, making sure we can keep the clean water running, our wastewater treatment functioning, our public safety response, both police, fire, ambulance, basic sewage, you know, water and sewer lines functioning, our maintenance, those kinds of things, so that people can get around and do the things that they normally do. And we are assisting with human services items and economic development items as we can. Those aren't necessarily the city's expertise, but we are certainly in contact with everybody. We'll provide whatever assistance and leadership that we can within our means. Also, something that touched on, but we are looking at the budget. We know that we would love to do a lot of things, perhaps provide financial assistance somehow into the community, and that certainly may be possible, but we also note that we anticipate particular shortfalls in a lot of areas in the budget. Most, I think immediately, the rooms, meals, and alcohol tax, since restaurants and bars are essentially closed, and people are being discouraged from traveling, we expect that that will drop off very dramatically. Parking, of course, and we're going to talk more about that, hopefully, and the council will agree to end any parking meter rates and enforcement tonight, but that will drop off, and, you know, a lot of our functions are funded directly from that parking fund. Certainly, activity revenue from the rec department, senior center, I mean, those are used to fund those activities, but there is usually a little extra that helps support those operations. So, we are looking at the impact of that. We don't know what property tax payments will look like in May. We are recommending that that deadline be extended by 30 days to help people out, from May 15 to June 15. But typically, we have very high collection rates here, just people tend to pay on time. We will see if that changes as people's income is changed. And so, all of this means that we are trying to identify areas where we can reduce the budget. We're putting extra layers into the hiring process before we hire vacant positions. We are looking at projects and equipment and purchases, and ordering everyone to cut back. So, while we would love to free up money to go into community services, we also need to free up money to cover anticipated revenue losses.
Bill?
So, I feel like that eases up well for potential actions the city council could take.
Dan Richardson--
Sorry, go ahead.
--to add something.
Well, I just, I actually had a question before we do move on to the next topic. Is Bill and Cameron, what are the, as far as the services, the core services that the city is providing--
Dan, you're hard to hear.
Okay, I'll try and speak louder, how's that?
Everything's good. You got to extend to the mic.
I am speaking--
They're turning the mic on.
Yeah. Two questions. One is, you know, have there been any hiccups or any issues with providing the core services so far? And second, do you foresee any?
So far, there have not been. I mean, we haven't had a complaint about people being inconvenienced for the offices. I suspect to some extent, you know, there will be, but certainly, so far, we've been able to fully staff our services. The hiccups will come when people start getting sick, and we've got to cover those costs. As Cameron mentioned, for things like water and sewer treatment, public works, we are looking regionally. I think the police and public safety people are doing the same, to how to cover each other, as different departments have shortages, so that those core services can be maintained.
Okay.
Bill?
Oh.
So, do you see us maybe--
Connor's speaking.
Sorry. So, in addition to, like, tightening the belt, you know, partial hiring freeze, you know, equipment delays, do you see the need, maybe in the next few weeks, to have sort of a, like, menu of a rescission plan for the current budget, that we'd actually have to vote on?
Possibly, yes. We're running those numbers now, and we would, we will probably at least try to get you a status report within the route, and then, if we need further action, we'll take it from there.
Bill, the question was kind of hard to hear.
Sure.
Can you just repeat that question?
I'd be happy to do that, and I'll try to remember to do that every time. So, Connor Casey asked if, in addition to just tightening the belt, if there was going to be a rescission plan presented to the council in the next couple of weeks to help balance costs, and I said possibly. We are going to be running the numbers, and we'll provide you a status report within a week, and if there is need to take formal action after that, that would be on the agenda coming up shortly.
Okay. Great, thank you. And Lauren, did you have a comment?
Just a couple of questions, looking through, and this is super helpful. Thank you to Cameron and Bill and the rest of staff for pulling together. I think this information is great and incredibly helpful to have all in one place as a memo, so thank you so much for that. Looking at, one thing I was curious about was, I mean, one thing you mentioned was like that we need an in-person, I know the legislature is actively looking at trying to undo that for emergency situations, that we might get to a point where that will no longer be the state law, so then we can obviously respond to that, so we can all keep an eye out for that, and just underscore, like, these days, video meetings are so much more productive, so--
Yeah, Lauren? Lauren? Lauren, could you say that again, maybe half steps slower? Most of us missed it.
Oh, sorry. Well, I was saying, one, probably people saw, but the legislature is looking at undoing the in-person requirement for meetings, so we can all keep our eye out for that, but that, they're looking to do that, so then we can, you know, respond. And then, one thing I was curious about was, so, you know, watching what's happening in some other parts of the world, if we're getting to a point where getting quorum might be difficult, or ease-of-stay home, like, could you just walk through, we're all here, and could understand, like, what's the, what's the sequence of how we deal with things, like, if we don't, if we aren't able to get quorum, or who's in charge? If you and Cameron are both out, for example, like, is there, or is there, like, a good memo on, like, succession and decision-making if things become particularly, you know, challenging?
We're putting that all together. Right now, we've checked on state law, and actually, there is no provision for emergency action if less than a quorum is available. And obviously, I suspect we're not the only people looking at that. You know, and I, I mean, this is a different situation, where people are more likely to be bedridden, but, you know, you wonder what would happen if there were a major tornado or something, and a bunch of people were killed, and you couldn't have a quorum. So, you know, I think that's a fair question. We will have a succession, you know, line of succession here at the city. Again, we're not necessarily expecting, I mean, we don't know, but that people will be so out of commission that they can't at least answer a question or something, but certainly, we will have thought that through from a staff level, and we're trying to make sure that we understand what things, you know, we have a, our chart, or we couldn't find anything unique in it, as far as the council, but unlike the general statutes for towns and cities, because we have a manager plan, there are certain administrative actions that can be taken by the staff, and we just may have to outline, like, in an emergency situation, what the council wants that to happen, and what those parameters are, and we're looking at all of them.
Thank you. One other quick question. So, really happy to see the paid administrative leave, and that we're making sure that staff are not going to run out of sick time. Have you thought at all about, I've seen a number of entities kind of treating this because it's, you know, this is a really unusual emergency situation, of like, calling it administrative time, or some people have called it COVID time, or other things, like that this is not, you know, are we going to be leaving potentially our staff, where nobody's going to have sick leave for the rest of the year, and are going to be in debt? Is there, have you thought at all about, you know, making this a special exception of leave for this emergency that doesn't impact people's future?
Well, basically, that's what we're doing, is saying that nobody can run out. You know, we have employees in far different situations as far as their leave. Some people have, you know, loads of leave, you know, sick leave time, others that are relatively new don't have much. And so, our commitment is to make sure nobody goes if they're sick, that they'll get paid, and it will probably, if something extraordinary happened, we consider that on a case-by-case basis. We really want to make sure people stay whole, but we're also being, trying to be careful that we're focusing on this particular sickness, not, we feel very fortunate we don't have abusive sick leave within the city government, and our employees are exemplary, but we also wouldn't want to create a case where suddenly, we're creating, you know, Sarah for any other outage or illness, you know, that will be handled the way things normally are. But for this particular illness, the quarantine time, sick time, we're certainly taking that into account, as well as people who are forced to stay, you know, the sick leave law allows it to be used for childcare, and so, we're trying to take a liberal view of that, as far as, you know, people that are now in situations where their kids at home that they weren't expecting. But we're also cognizant of the fact that many people in the community who are paying these bills don't have those benefits, so we're trying to balance, you know, the cost and expense to them, and really using this as a way to make sure we can keep delivering the services that they're paying for.
On, Bill, on that point, is there short-term disability?
Yes.
And when does that kick in?
I'm going to say 14 days, but it might be 30. We can get you the--
Okay. I'm not necessarily concerned about the exact, but it's good to know, I mean, because that strikes me as another sort of tool in your toolbox, so if there is an extended leave caused by illness, that's usually when that type of coverage would--
That's correct, and that's what that is typically used for.
I was not able to hear that last comment.
Yes, thank you. So, the question--
I couldn't hear most of what Dan said.
The comment from Dan Richardson was that, was asked if we had short-term disability coverage and when it kicks in, and my answer was, yes, we have it. It's either 14 or 30 days that it kicks in. It's been both during my time, and I just can't remember off the top of my head which one it is. But what that means is if somebody is sick for longer than those periods, they go on a short-term disability plan, and that saves their use of sick leave. So, people with, and that goes for about, I think it's six-month periods. People that have an extended illness beyond two to four weeks are protected anyway through that plan.
Just following up on that, are we having regular meetings with the heads of the bargaining units, just to make sure? You know, some of the stuff outlined in the memo said you might be working outside the scope of your duties a little bit, so I just thought there might be a need for a side letter or something in some of those contracts?
We've had preliminary conversations, as it so happens, we are scheduled to begin bargaining with two of our units, so we've been in meetings with them already, and in fact, are talking about maybe pushing those off. I think even, you know, the union members feel like this isn't the time to be asking for more things, but so far, they've been very receptive to doing what, what needs to be done within reason. We have, I think, you know, I don't want to speak, I'd let the union speak for themselves if you want to ask them, but I think we've got pretty good relations with our units, and they've always been extremely cooperative. And when we've had times of crisis in the city, no one's worried about union or management, everyone's risen to the occasion and just delivered, and I think that's across the board, police, fire, public works, and our non-union staff. So, I have full confidence that our folks will do what maybe needs to be done.
Mayor, I think Stephen Whitaker wants to say something.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
A couple of things. One, I raised the issue from another meeting, that, and it was very questionable whether you can chair a meeting not being in the room, that it makes it very difficult to see who's talking, or to moderate, or to hear. Just file that one for later. As far as changing or having input to the legislator, legislature, or the Joint Rules Committee, this is, this discussion is going on nationwide about whether to change meeting, open meeting requirements, and this is a perfect example-- And this is a perfect example of the combination of three telephones and squeaking audio and, you know, painful distortion, et cetera. This is not something we should do haphazardly, especially not compromising participation rights. In this case, we're recorded, but will all meetings be recorded? Is O.R.C.A. gonna show up for teleconferences or be contracted to engage in teleconferences and make sure there is a recording for those asynchronous review? Those are all things to consider. I first want to propose that the city, well, I guess it's second, that the city assign a point person to address the needs of the most vulnerable. Do not be lulled into thinking that this countywide group, we don't have county government here, by the way. This county group that's had a few phone calls is letting the city off of all its obligations. There's a, the city has an obligation to its vulnerable populations and it needs to be stepping up now, not backing off further, thinking that this brand-new, you know, county-level coordination has got it all under control. I did review a memo, a 10-page memo that came out of that process yesterday and it says, "Plan and plan and find a couple of buildings where you can stick all the homeless in." And that is not anywhere near what we should be doing. This is going to require lots of local initiative and, but there's an idea that potentially has merit in both caring for the food insecure as well as the businesses that are under stress. We've got, between Berry and Montpelier Shelters, we've got 30, 60, 75 food insecure people needing to be fed who are also congregating in unsafe densities. That needs to be spread out and you can't just ship everybody to Berry. The noon time meals that have been called soup kitchen or community meals have all been discontinued. Some of those churches are handing out bag lunches on their scheduled day. But there's four restaurants that I know of, Positive Pie, Uncommon Market, Olivita and Mad Taco that are making efforts to stay open. We have to be taking emergency measures to try to keep this city alive even on a most modest level. And it occurred to me there might be a nice match there between-
So Stephen, I'm gonna interrupt you here. You read about three minutes. I appreciate what you're saying and I think that, because I think you're headed towards a suggestion and I appreciate that. I want to hear it, but let's do it when we are in the suggestion portion schedule.
I thought I could hear you, Mayor.
So, which I think we're about to move into anyway, but I'd love to start with the cities, or at least the suggestions that we've put together for the city. And then, and then you can come back, Stephen, and let us know your suggestion.
So, Mayor?
So is everybody otherwise ready to move on?
Anne, you weren't that clear, but basically, so I'm just gonna relay what you said. So the next section of the meeting, Steve, is for open suggestions. So all she was saying is she sounded like you were making suggestions and she would be happy to hear that at that time. So she wasn't saying stop, just wait. Okay, you're back.
She wants to hear your stuff.
Okay. Great.
So the next-
So are you, Bill, are you in a place where you're ready to lead us to the next section?
Yeah, we both will. So we, and I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and also Councilmember Hurl, who had provided an outline of a lot of thinking in advance to us, suggestions. It helped us organize our thinking and lay out some of these ideas. So it was very helpful. But as we sorted through, there were certain things that, you know, we realized the city had no authority to do or couldn't get involved with, but there were some things that we can. And so we've tried to lay those out. There are certain things that the council could just write letters or statements of support to the people that can make those decisions. There are other things that the city can take specific action on tonight. And then I think, as we talked about, the next part would be to brainstorm ideas and talk about how, talk about how, you know, what we can follow up on. So I'll let Cameron go through the specifics of these potential actions, but we're hoping that you'll want to take some of these tonight. I think they could have some benefit.
So Anne, do you want me to go through these one at a time? Or would you like me to read all of them and then we just discuss them all?
I think there are few, there's a few enough of them to just go through them one at a time.
Okay. So some of the suggestions that we received, for the first one on the back of the handout is to reach out to utility providers, including internet, et cetera, to ensure that they won't shut off their utilities at this time, ensuring that folks have access to testing or have the state-enact policies ensuring access to that. And then work with local businesses to encourage and support them in offering paid sick leave to employees. So we understand that this isn't, aren't things that we can force people to do, but our suggestion would be for council to endorse a letter or something to that effect to these groups if you want to. We're getting nods here, just so you know.
How do you feel about sending letters?
And we could certainly write those for you to have feedback on. We're not also not supporting that.
Yeah.
Right. We're happy to do the drafting.
I'm happy to start talking.
I can value-
But Jack?
Dan's cleaning the floor.
Now, there's collections and collection-related activities already.
Could you repeat that, Jack?
So we should take them off the list?
I would say yes, or maybe send them a letter indicating our appreciation.
Yeah, I think they do that through April 30th.
Jack?
Jack, can you please repeat what utility provider-
Jack was saying that-
I think someone was asking me a question, but I didn't hear it.
To repeat what you said.
Okay, yes. Green Mountain Power has announced that they're temporarily suspending through the end of April, collections-related activities, including service disconnections, effective immediately. Regular billing will continue, but they're not, so we don't need to send them a letter asking them to keep people's service on them. But if we're sending letters to other companies, we might send them a letter just saying we appreciate what they're doing.
Thank you.
I think that's a great idea.
Sorry, yeah, Mr. Jay, I do think it's a good idea to send a letter to Green Mountain Power. I've seen that Comcast has also done the same. Obviously, it's very significant, like, maybe showing that publicly that we appreciate, that they're putting off any sort of delay, quickly or shut off for at least 30 days. It's important to acknowledge that is great.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion? Andy, you want us to motion you or disagree? Yes, yes, I think that's a good idea. I'll make a motion that we send a letter of appreciation to these providers, like GMP and Comcast and I guess other providers that we know in the area. That are not going to cut off- Right. They're not- Server. They're gonna keep the services going even if it's an older bill.
You got it.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. All of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You have to do a roll call?
Only if it's unanimous.
Never mind.
Only if it's, um, so, and me.
Yeah, it was unanimous.
Sorry about that.
Sorry?
It was unanimous.
Okay, so one more time. What's that?
It was unanimous.
It was unanimous.
So it's all, you're all good.
Okay. Okay. There are other parts of this bullet, though, so not a motion was just about appreciating some, um-
Anne, can you hold on just one minute, please? We're sorry if this isn't up to your quality control, Steve, but we're trying to conduct the meeting under the best circumstances we can. We realize this isn't network television. So commenting and talking to other people while the meeting's going on is not helping under these difficult situations. Thank you.
So regarding other, the other bullet, um-
Yeah?
Yeah.
I was just curious, so, I mean, not everybody in my, because other internet providers, right, do we know if any of the smaller ones are similarly, have a similar thing or do we just know that Comcast has? Like, not everybody's Comcast, right?
Right. I don't know.
I mean, maybe we could make a letter, like a thank you to Comcast for doing this. We hope every service writer, maybe we will have found out by then, but it might be some of the smaller ones that, I would just hope that we would follow up with all of the internet service providers and kind of urge them to do the same if they haven't already or to verify that they have. And if they have, then I'll send them a letter of appreciation.
Do you make a mo-
Sure. I don't, do we know all the, as in through-
I think we've got the gist of it.
I can do that.
I think we've got that covered. You don't need to worry about a motion.
Okay. And I don't, is anyone in disagreement with that idea?
Not me.
Okay. Great. So perhaps the second bullet there is basically perhaps writing a letter to the state, just encouraging them to make sure that everyone has access to testing. How do people feel about that one?
Well, I thought, so there's access to testing, which I know there's been a lot of issues or we have a limited supply and people, a lot of people are wondering about, you know, how, why they're not being tested, other things. I think there's like, there's access to testing and then there's also access to healthcare, you know, encouraging the state to help cover the cost or the insurance and that sort of people getting tested or treated. Any of these potential issues we could throw out there if we were gonna do a letter on this topic to, I think, the state government about access to testing and treatment? I was just curious, what do you think if they, what's the thought around this topic in general before putting out more, broadening it if there's not a trace in general?
I'm not sure if that's, if it's really necessary to do this. You know, we know that right now that the department is carrying out these drive-by testing sites. There are at least a couple so far. And I got to go to one today and it was very smooth and efficient. And they didn't, didn't do anything to ask me to pay or anything. It was just, I think they're being sent to the health department lab.
If I can add, you know, I think the testing question has a little bit of, it's fraught with a little bit more issues. It's not just simply testing for everyone. I know I've read articles that suggest, you know, they have to be somewhat artful about the testing that they do because it can give people a false sense of security if they get testing. And so some of the public health science and thought around that still hasn't necessarily congealed. I mean, I get the sense that the state and the health department are pushing for more testing and more access to testing, but I don't know if it's something where we as a city council need to jump in or if our letter would necessarily tip the balance or we'd be walking into a more complicated argument with a very simple statement.
I agree. Anyone want to make a motion on that one or shall we move on?
I personally would-
I agree to move on.
Sorry, let's hear Lauren and then whoever else was just speaking.
I, like, that, I hear all that that makes sense to me around testing. I think that issue, you know, it's, what it is applying and following the lead. I think there had been a question raised of access to healthcare, like, I'm more talking about the treatment side. Is there any, which I know that the state is, and maybe getting letters of support from cities would be helpful, is there looking at possible budget locations and what the state might want to do to help cover people, knowing that we don't want people to not get treated, so then they're gonna be in our communities. I mean, it's both an equity issue and a public health risk if we're not helping and treating people, depending on ability to pay.
Do you want to make a motion regarding that?
I'd be interested in if anybody else has any thoughts on that before making a motion.
Somebody might just kind of summarize what Lauren said.
Yes, so she said, to restate what I think Lauren is saying, and she thinks it might be important for the state to have letters of support from municipal or city government regarding any budget needs they might have to cover folks who can't afford to get testing or access to healthcare at all. So it's less about testing and more-
Treatment, treatment, treatment.
The word is treatment.
Okay. Can I just throw in one possibility? I'm looking at the other section down there that we haven't gotten to with the evictions. And I would see maybe a letter to the governor and legislature, take it in some form there with sort of a menu of things we'd like to see. So I'm wondering if it might just be a comprehensive one letter as opposed to sort of piecemeal it in on this?
Right. That makes sense. Basically, you're taking statements of policy here and then we'll-
Yes. I, yeah. Yeah, let's, but other.
I think it would be helpful for everyone to call-
Alright, so is there a motion regarding that?
To mute themselves, because you guys are all talking over each other. So if you're not speaking, if you could mute yourself, that might clear the line for whoever is speaking.
They've all muted.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I move that we include in a letter to the governor and state legislature, a request for the state to help ensure there's access to treatment for all the monitors regardless of ability to pay.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, all right, so moving on. And then, working with local businesses to encourage and support them in offering paid sick leave. Cameron, do you want to tell us, or someone? Either Cameron or Lauren, you want to talk about that one?
Well, that's just coming from suggestions that we've heard from y'all, to be honest. So.
If I can, I think this issue is somewhat related to the subsequent issue about the evictions and foreclosures in that maybe the best way to deal with this, and I was thinking about this today, was, you know, Montpelier Alive is already reaching out to local businesses and is in good contact with them. And I'm wondering if someone from the city or from our council even should be a point person with the Montpelier Alive for this specific topic to work with them. Because, you know, on the issue of evictions, you know, we're in a very unique situation in that there are a number of businesses that are going to be shut down. But unlike other times when landlords may say, okay, well, I need to move to evict because I need to put somebody else in there, no one else can go in there. If you have a restaurant that's closed, it's closed. It's gonna always stay closed as a restaurant regardless of who the tenant is. And so, you know, it seems to me that the solutions to a lot of- And so, um, you know, the, it seems to me that the solutions to a lot of these problems are going to not necessarily be, um, a holdoff on foreclosures, and frankly, the courts have already shut down non-emergency hearings. And so if we can have some type of relationship or, or develop or work with Dan over at Montpelier Alive to start to talk to these landlords, um, maybe even convening a group if it seems, if it seems sensible to, to have these discussions, and then if we can provide anything, any support, um, or any direction or coordination, that, that would seem to be more, much more effective than necessarily writing a letter saying, "Please don't evict people."
So, uh, you would suggest that we just talk with Dan Groberg at Montpelier Alive about this topic, then?
I, I would. I mean, that sounds a little wishy-washy when, but I think it's the best, the best approach, which is that we should have one person from the city, um, interfacing with Dan and, you know, sort of asking these questions and reaching out to him and then having that channel of communication so that, you know, if we can make policy, if we can do different types of things to support them, that we would have that. And that could affect other, other policies down the line, because I suspect the answer to these problems are gonna be more complicated and require more, sort of, ongoing discussions.
Other thoughts on that?
Yes, this is Jay. Um, Dan, sorry, you were breaking up a little bit, but, um, I actually participated on the, it was a phone call early this morning with the FDBA, the Montpelier Business Association, that Dan Groberg oversaw, and I listed in on that, and that was one of the key things that came up in that conversation was being able to communicate with commercial landlords about, um, you know, not forgiveness, but just some ease on, and, and, you know, relaxing at some of the deadlines for rent, how people get through them. So, um, I'm more than happy to, um, take that on from the city perspective and work with Dan to then coordinate with, with commercial land, commercial property owners to try to see how they can support local businesses, because after they're not dealing with eviction. Um, obviously, as the city, we're not, we don't have authority to say, "Okay, this is, you, you can fix somebody," but, yeah, I, I will be, I'll take the point on, from the city perspective, in terms of working with, um, with those commercial property owners and then with their, with the businesses to help try to be as flexible as we are right now given the circumstances.
Did y'all hear him?
Yep.
So Jay said that he would be the council point person to work with Montpelier Alive and the business community about trying to navigate the way through, uh, leases, evictions, et cetera.
That sounds good to me. Any other thoughts?
It sounds good to me, too. One thing I should point out, because we had, as you might guess, a considerable amount of discussion about, uh, the eviction question as legal aid, and it's very clear that, uh, the Supreme Court's administrative order 49, while it, uh, it halts, uh, hearings being held, it, uh, does not suspend filings or deadlines or anything else, though a landlord could still file an eviction complaint in court, uh, the canon's time to respond to that would, would continue to run, and so there's, people are still potentially at risk to, uh, to be evicted even during the, uh, this, uh, emergency. And so communication and encouraging people to, uh, to be compassionate is a, is a important thing.
Right. I would just say, if I could jump in...
That's the approach that we need to take with this, the populist approach that Montpelier is on the corporation and, um, yeah, we take that approach as well, as we're dealing with this in the city, I think is exactly the right path to go.
So Jay just said he would talk to the MDC and that he would bring up those legal issues.
I think you're gonna need, also need, uh, financial institutions involved in this because in many cases, the landlords have mortgage payments due.
It strikes me, sorry, Connor.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I, I mean, it strikes me that this is, that the city may be in a unique position, be given that we don't, we're not a bank, we're not a landlord, we're not a business, but it seems that all three of those people are gonna have to sit down and talk at the table at some point, and so, you know, the city's function here may be something where we encourage that type of communication, working with the MDC and Montpelier Alive, trying to get, you know, these people to talk at the table, understanding that there, there's pressures on all three. You know, the banks are driven by federal regulations, um, and their, their governance for their loans, the, you know, landlords are governed by the banks to a certain extent, as well as their other external pressures, and then, obviously, the tenants are sort of at the bottom and are, you know, governed by all of that, plus the whims of fate. So I think if we can get any type of, of conversation going and, and use the city as a, as a neutral to facilitate that in some way, um, you know, I think that's a really effective tool that we can use to help, help these businesses, um, in this time.
I, I would just say, in addition to this, I, I would like the city to be on the record in some way of supporting the state coming out with a moratorium on evictions. Uh, you know, hundreds of municipalities are looking at this right now. Boston just instituted a 90-day moratorium. Um, we're disproportionately impacted by this, having a community of 40% renters, and if, you know, most people spend an average of a third of their salary on housing there. Uh, this could hit us pretty hard. I don't think it's gonna hit too many people, uh, but even if it's one or two that make such a difference there, so just getting on the record with the state in some manner, I think, would be helpful. And again, I did reach out to the League of Cities and Towns, uh, both Burlington and Barry, and their charters do give them a mechanism to enforce this. Uh, we, we have nothing, so we are dependent, as, you know, under Dillon's rule.
Well, I just wanted to let everyone know, I just heard from the mayor, her phone call dropped out. She tried to call back in, and it was, she got a busy signal, so she's walking over from her apartment to join the meeting in person. So, uh, I guess, Donna, are you the council president?
Are they all gone? That would... No, okay.
Donna, are you there?
She might be on mute.
Are you on mute?
Oops, Dar, yes, I am. I'm using my button up, please.
You're, you're the presiding officer now until the mayor gets here in person.
Okay, well, if, since I'm not visual, I think it's really important that we have one person saying, "Yes, it's your turn to speak." And until you hear that, we don't speak. So, are we talking, remember, I'm Donna, I wanna speak, or something, because it is hard not to interrupt. By the same token, then you don't get to say anything. So can we go through Cameron, for, for who's talking? Is that possible?
Uh, well, we don't hear any better than you do. But yeah, sure.
Oh, but you've got three people there, right?
We have two people here right now.
There's several people in the room you're looking at. So, I mean, if I wanna speak, or Lauren wants to speak, just say Cameron, and then you should be the next person that gets a chance to speak.
Or they could just address you. You're running the meeting now.
Oh, okay, that, that's fine, I just, because I'm having a very hard time hearing everybody that's not on the call. People in the room have a bubble...
Oh, yeah, someone in the room will let you know.
Okay, thank you. So was Dan speaking there, or was that Jay?
No, no one's speaking now. This is Bill.
Who was speaking?
This is Bill.
Okay. And discussion about whether or not, about renters? Who was the last person who was speaking?
Connor.
That might have been me. I was suggesting, um, you know, for sending a letter to the governor and the legislature, and at least my delegation, uh, we certainly have the access to testing in there, but I would also, uh, like to propose we include a, uh, temporary moratorium on evictions that the pa- state would pass in one of their emergency bills that they're considering.
So Connor has asked...
Connor, do you want to make a motion?
Um, yes, I'd like to move, uh, the city supports a mor- a temporary moratorium on evictions, um, in a letter to the legislature and governor.
This is Jack, seconding.
Jack, seconding, thank you. Anyone want to make a comment about that?
I, I, I do.
Great.
This is, this is Dan.
He's commenting.
Um, the, the one comment I, I'd add is, I think you, you find, I, I agree, you know, it's a different game with the residential, um, evictions, um, but I think we find the same pressures that are gonna bear, uh, on landlords as well as, you know, uh, and residential as well as commercial, which is that, you know, they have mortgages, they have to pay. I, I guess I would like an amendment that, that would include, um, you know, a moratorium not only on, uh, evictions, but also on, uh, foreclosures, um, during this time period as well.
Not good. Mr. Parliament, Terry and I, can I just consider that a amendment?
Your amendment?
Yeah, I'd, I'd offer that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
So, for those that were having trouble hearing, Connor had initially moved that we go on record as supporting a moratorium on evictions for residents and businesses, and Dan offered a friendly amendment to also include foreclosures, which Connor accepted. Uh, so that's the motion before you.
Does Jack need to accept that, too?
Yes.
Jack, are you...
I accept that also.
And the mayor has arrived in person.
Hello.
All right.
Do you wanna take over the meeting?
This is Jack, I'm asking this discussion that's there right now.
I, I just said I was fine with that amendment.
Okay. Explain it to you, or we can go ahead and vote?
Oh, go ahead, you go ahead and, yeah, you go ahead. Sorry, I'm just picking up what's happening.
Okay, so I'm calling for a vote on the motion made by Connor, amended by Dan, about renters, rentals and foreclosures. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes. The floor is now yours, mayor.
Oh, thank you. I don't know if you can hear me.
Can you hear her?
Loud and clear.
Okay. Which part are we up to?
We're up to parking enforcement.
Parking enforcement. Uh, actually, I'm gonna let you explain this, Bill.
Well, so, uh, obviously, with businesses closed, uh, there is not the demand for parking that we normally see. Our main reason for parking enforcement is to keep spaces open for people, uh, and it seems somewhat cruel that in a time when we would like people to be visiting downtown and there are open spaces that we would be charging for parking or fin- or ticketing people, we would continue to ticket for, um, things like handicap zones, hydrant violations, blocking driveways, those types of things, but for just general time and meter violations, we would recommend that not, we, we waive or suspend, temporarily suspend all collections for meters, temporarily suspend all enforcement of meters, and in fact, that we, we would take the meters, uh, what we call, put them to sleep, they're electronic meters, because we have to actually pay a $5 per month per meter activation fee, so by actually turning them off, we'd save about $2,000 a month. Um, so we would, we think that's, council might wanna do that.
It seems like a great idea to me.
This is Jack.
Yep.
Um, would anyone like to...
This is Jack, I'd be happy to make that.
Dan, you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we suspend parking, I think, parking fees. The duration of two weeks?
I would say until, until you, to further notice, until you decide not to.
I'll second.
Okay, suspend collection parking fees until further noted.
And Connor seconded?
I'll second that, for sure.
Okay, and, uh, any further discussion?
And that includes putting the meters to sleep, right?
Um, well, yeah, go ahead.
I, that, I was just gonna say what the bill said, that includes the other things bill suggested, including putting the meters to sleep.
That's part of their responsibility, we don't need to do a motion for that. That's management of the meters.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on that, just as someone, if it's in the contract, but, um, would that, would that potentially free up some resources that we could redeploy, the parking staff to do some other things around this?
Yes, yes, and we are looking at that.
Right.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Uh, that passes, thank you. Uh, all right, property taxes, this is something that we have, well, Bill and I have talked about it anyway, but, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so at this point, you know, our next property tax payments are not due until May 15th, and no one knows what kind of situation we will be in on May 15th. Um, our, our immediate suggestion, uh, so we don't really have the authority to just waive or relieve property taxes, those have to go through the Board of Abatement, uh, but what we can do is delay the collection time, so we're recommending, at least for now, that we add another 30 days of collection, uh, until June 15th, and that, obviously, if people, and we would ask that if people have the means to pay by May 15th, that would really be great for cash flow and the ability to do, uh, some of these other services we're hoping to do, but that, those that wait until, uh, June 15th, uh, we would not charge interest and penalties until after that.
How would it, how would you feel about making that?
So, Phil, it's Donna here, can I ask a question?
Um, I'm just gonna jump in. Um, how, how would you feel about making that July?
Um, the only reason is we were, it, it has to do with closing out the fiscal year, so, I mean, we would, we could always reconsider that when we get closer to that time, if, if it appears that that's necessary. Um, I, so, I mean, it's obviously up to you, we think it's cleaner, at least for now, uh, in March, to still say June 15th, but, uh, again, we have till, really, till May to make that decision.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Connor, go ahead.
Nope, not looking for a hard number, but about what percentage are on automatic payments for property taxes?
I, I don't know the answer to that, um, we can get you that in.
Think that'll give us a good indication of how much we actually get?
The question was, what percentage of people are on automatic payment for property taxes, and I, I don't know the answer, but we can get that answer.
Donna, did you have another question?
My question was about that, when we put out that payment is delayed, we can still encourage people who are able to pay such an auto-payment, that they can still pay, it just won't be this time. Is that correct?
Right.
Yes. And Jack, did you have something to add?
I did, and that was that I don't recall voting on, uh, Donna's motion regarding parking enforcement.
You, you did.
We did. You might have cut out at that point.
Okay.
We, it was...
Okay, very good.
We approved it. Any other, um, unless you wanna object?
Oh, no, I have no objection, I'm in for it, in favor of this action.
Okay.
I just didn't hear it.
On the, this, uh, proposal to, um, push back, uh, at least, uh, interest in penalties, um, to June 15th, uh, Jack or Lauren, did you have any comment on that?
I support it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jay.
Yeah.
I support it, huh?
Um, and Dan?
No, I was just gonna say, I'll, I'll make the motion that we, uh, delay the fourth installment of the property taxes for the fiscal year 20, uh, from May 15th, 2020, until June 15th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any further discussion? Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Great, all right, that passes, thank you. And we can revisit pushing that further back, uh, later on. Water sewer bills.
Similarly, I guess, you know, at this point, they're not due until June, um, so I, I think we can discuss whether we wanna have a collection delay, waiving the fees the same, the same way, uh, or we can take this up later when we have a better sense of what's going on. Would I have his firm a resolution on that right now?
Dan?
This might make sense to take up in June or in May when we have a better sense. I mean, you know, part of it is that we know this isn't necessarily going to resolve itself quickly. But at the same time, I think we'll have a better snapshot, too, of what, you know, economic harm people are feeling at that point in time. And I have no problem pushing it forward when the time's appropriate. But it might make sense to do it along with the property taxes, sort of in tandem if we are moving beyond the normal cycle.
Connor, anything to add?
No, I agree with Dan's suggestion.
Donna? Okay, I'm just going to keep rolling through people, just because it's easier. Lauren, any thoughts?
Next one's please.
Jack?
I agree.
Jay?
Yes, I think we take it up when the talking's right.
Okay, is there, oh, Dan, did you make a motion?
You don't, I haven't taken a motion.
We're taking it later, never mind. Great.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, and capital area neighborhoods, I'm going to speak to that one. Sorry, did someone have something to say? Nope, okay. So capital area neighborhoods, this is something that keeps coming up in conversations that I'm having. I don't know if you're hearing much about this, but lots of folks are asking for it. This was a sort of a network of neighborhoods across the city where there was usually one leader who would be sort of in charge of doing things like disseminating information or collecting information. You know, this could be city projects. So I'm sort of stepping back from just the particular crisis we're in now, but looking more generally. It could be about things like letting people know that their street was going to be paved that, you know, the coming summer and making sure that people were aware that was coming. It could even be as something as, you know, relevant or preventative like now as just knowing what the resources are in your neighborhood. Things like who has a generator or, you know, who's growing local food or that sort of thing. In this particular situation, I think it could be useful to have capital area neighborhoods for the purposes of getting basically volunteer forms and need forms to folks who particularly aren't computer savvy. Or maybe they are on computers, but maybe they're just not that exposed to these need forms. So it would be a way to do a little bit of a deeper dive into, you know, knowing what the needs are in our community. This was a program of the city about 10 years ago. And it sort of fizzled out, but I think it's pretty relevant now. I don't know that this needs a motion. I had sort of volunteered myself to help coordinate this and organize it. Already started talking to some folks about maybe being leaders, but would love to just open this up for suggestions, thoughts, discussion. Dan?
I'll offer, I mean, I think it's a good idea. And it actually, the mutual aid group may be a logical group to start with to work this out, because they've already collected, my understanding is about 100 names.
Like 200?
Yeah, of people who want to help. And this strikes me as one of the great ways in which we could organize that on sort of a subsidy neighborhood level where people can identify needs or issues as they arise and then have a way to trickle that up, up to the city level. So I think that's a great place to start, and I would suggest that.
Yep, that's great. And just so you're aware, they are, I've been in touch with them. They know that we're maybe going to work on this. And they see this as a way to potentially delegate some of their work in terms of volunteers or getting to know people's needs. Yeah, so, yeah, working closely with them, for sure.
Dan?
Donna?
Donna here, when you have time.
Yep, go for it, Donna.
I'm really glad you brought this up. I think it's a wonderful resource, and it should tie in with our consensus that's going on, the national census being taken, that we could really engage in getting their census done. The brochure that's on the website is the old one. And some of these groups still meet once in a while. So I think it's, I'd love to see it become more strong. The gentleman who talked at our council meetings before felt that it should also be an alert for sexual assault. And I think we should maybe go back in some of the minutes and find some of his suggestions and try to incorporate it. The brochure that's on the website mentions emergency management, community building, and civic engagement. And I think it's true for all of those. So thank you for volunteering your time.
Yeah, for sure. Connor, anything to add?
Yeah, no, I think it's great. I think it's going to be a heavy lift to set up. But once you do, it could really be a lot less daunting with some of these things we're talking about as time goes on. So I'm fully supportive.
Lauren?
I'm really excited. I think this is great. And really appreciate you stepping up. One question I had, I mean, kind of to what Steve Whitaker was saying earlier, like, so as of now, you are interested in helping kind of see this going. Just thinking about, like, you know, this is a huge kind of setting and trying to connect community members at this particular emergency moment to services, to food, to medicine, whatever people need. It's a lot to put on volunteers. It's a lot to put on you to make sure the volunteers are happening. And just like, in this particular case of being this pandemic, not people will be getting sick or need to be doing caregiving. Just like, sticking through as you're getting it set up, like, what's the redundancy? Like, we can't become too reliant on, like, some.
Hey, Lauren. Lauren, you got to slow down.
Sorry, hanging on your conversation. Just thinking about how you're building it in a way that there's redundancy, knowing that a lot of people are going to have a lot of caregiving or sickness themselves to deal with in this particular emergency. And, you know, I don't know if it does make sense to Stephen Whitaker's point of if there's a staff person who's helping, you know, look at what's happening to, like, knowing that this is really the core of how are we connecting our residents to essential needs, like food and medicine. And entirely relying on volunteers for this particular moment.
Thank, thank you.
It's challenging, but just try to think through that.
Thank you for that point. I think that's, your point is well taken. I think it's important to have some redundancy in this, in the system. And so, you know, also knowing that 2-1-1 is out there, I think is important. But also to your point about staff, I think, actually, I would love to hear from Bill or Cameron about, well, so, how it was arranged previously. And then I have another idea about that, but yeah.
So it was done at a time when oil prices in particular were quite bad and people were facing pretty severe needs. It was organized through the planning department. At that point, we had two, what's the, not volunteers, but the.
Vistas.
Vistas, thank you, two Vista people.
I'm there, I'm sure.
And they were the staff coordinators for this. So really, they did all the legwork, helping keep everything together. And, you know, the list of names and helping set up the meetings and those kind of things. So there was a fair amount of legwork done out of this building. And it was with, you know, Vista staff people. We'd have to figure out who had those skills, abilities, and time to do that. But it certainly, I mean, keeping our folks safe is top priority, so.
So in that same spirit, I, I mean, so having vistas cost us something. I could also picture, like, this is pretty discreet work in terms of, like, it's pretty clear that for a city, for the city's responsibility, it would be about communicating and sort of directing, directing information and, you know, both collecting it and getting it out. And that, I feel like that's pretty finite. I could also see us having some help from outside organizations. I'm just going to say, for example, Sustainable Montpelier Coalition has, is very interested in this. I'm not necessarily right now suggesting that we just go with them, but that we could partner with someone to.
Makes sense.
To do this in the long term. I'm just interested in getting this up and running, basically ASAP. And so, based on, just so everyone knows, based on the previous neighborhood delineations, there were 14 regions, and we already have two volunteers who have said that they'd be willing to be leaders. So, just putting that out there. So other comments? Jack, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Lauren, any, well, I guess we heard from Lauren. Jay, anything to add?
Uh, nope.
Okay. And Donna, you've, Donna or Lauren, anything more?
Nope, nope.
Okay, and Dan, you're good?
I was just going to say, I'm happy to help.
Okay, oh, great, awesome. All right, well, and I don't think we need a motion regarding that. Okay, thank you. So moving on from there, so now we're in the brainstorming section. Other ideas, I have at least two other ideas that I'd like to mention. But I'll let others start first. And then once we've gone through anything else, then you probably have something more to add, and I would love to hear it, so.
And there are two more folks that weren't here at the beginning of the meeting that may, I don't know if they're here with comments or not.
Okay. All right, any other suggestions? Connor?
He's talking about.
You got to make it closer, man.
Sure, I was talking about Mary Hooper there. And, you know, she made the good point that, you know, I think a lot of hourly workers in town don't know that they're eligible for unemployment. So I think it'd be great if we could just have a really clear link on the webpage to that. There's an eight to 10 day processing delay, is my understanding now. So anybody watching would really recommend you get those, you get that ASAP. And at the moment, I don't think that covers anybody under like 1099s or something. But they should probably keep an eye out, too, because things are changing all the time with the rules. But if we could have a link on the website, just pointed in that direction.
Dan?
Two things. One, I discussed earlier when I was on the homeless task force conference meeting with Cameron, the idea of linking Montpelier Alive, who seems to be really taking the lead on or communicating with businesses to establish who's open, who's closed, who's available for certain services. And I think we just need to make sure that we crosspost with them and coordinate. And the second thing is actually. Sorry, if you can't hear me. The second thing is actually a project that I'm going to start working with two of the lawyers from Legal Aid on tomorrow, is that there's going to be a lot of credit card use in the next several months as people lean heavy into that, where they don't have the resources. And there's going to need to be some guidance on that. So hopefully, whatever we develop from that, we can post on the city's website, because I think that's going to be a really important piece of consumer information, just because there are, there are things people can do now and in the short term to lessen any burden that comes from utilizing those credit cards and the consumer debt that comes with it.
Do you have any, like, an example, or?
Well, just as a, for example, I mean, the classic thing is that, you know, knowing that it's 18% interest that can be charged, paying certain minimums, the idea that consumer debt is ultimately, while it's bad, it's not as, it's not like a mortgage. They can't take away your home, they can't take away certain things. And so, you know, if you do find yourself leaning on it so heavy that you don't, you fall into a hole of knowing who to approach to help you with that type of situation, so you don't make bad decisions such as taking out a mortgage or reverse mortgage. I mean, you see a lot of this in the elderly, where they have a credit card debt and they lean on it. And then they, you know, get scared because they have this debt, so they take a reverse mortgage, which is the worst thing in the world you can possibly do, because now people can take away your home, kind of things. But, you know, so issues like that that people can be aware of with, I think, their credit card is just, it's more of a general service. But I do think it would be important to post on the city website.
Thank you. Jay, anything you want to suggest?
No, I had a hard, a bit of a hard time hearing Dan, but I just want to point out or speak to his first point that the Montpelier Alive takes the lead on connecting with local businesses and supporting them. And like I said before, I was part of Dan Grover kind of called at the NBA this morning. And it's what, Dan is doing a fantastic and incredible job of keeping people positive and also providing all the resources that are coming from the federal government, that come from the state, and also, you know, anything that we can do locally to support them. But I just think it's important to acknowledge the good work that Dan's doing in Montpelier Alive and doing to help support, you know, our local businesses through this process.
Great, thank you. Jack, anything to add?
Yes, the one thing, following up on what Connor said, the Department of Labor is now accepting online filing for unemployment. So that should be part of what we put on the webpage. And that should help people get their claims filed and get through. But I don't have any additional ideas to suggest at this time.
Okay. Donna, anything you want to add?
Well, only one thought that maybe I should give to Jay to give to Dan Grover is that I feel we could just support our local businesses by reaching out and buying gift certificates now when they might need some cash flow. And not just in restaurants, but in our stores in general. And that maybe Montpelier Alive could do a campaign around that. And I'm really proud about the neighborhood aspect, and I'm glad to see that being revitalized, that's all.
Great. Lauren? Oh, sorry.
Thanks, Donna. I know that's definitely on Dan's radar and something that Montpelier Alive is working on. Thank you for that.
Great. Lauren, anything to add?
Um, one thought, just wondering about coordinating more closely with the school system. I know they've been putting a ton of thought into things like how are they getting meals to kids who normally rely on food and stuff? And they were talking about ideas that some of which is reflected a little bit in the memo from the city, that things like delivering, using the school to deliver meals to people. And it seems like it would be great to explore with them, you know, what services they're trying to get out there and how the city might partner with them on any of it. So I would just encourage them to kind of maintain better communication or look for opportunities there. And just, you know, however we're continuing to meet weekly or whatever we need during this emergency and just try to get input from the public and the business community on, you know, what are the urgent needs, you know, being known and what are the kind of things the city could be doing to help advance on our local businesses.
May I jump in for just a moment?
Yes.
This is John Odom. I just forwarded you all a letter from Teresa Murray-Klassen about just what you're talking about. It came in this afternoon while I was out at the doctor, so I apologize. But there is information in your inboxes that might help facilitate that.
I think she might have even wanted some of that. I think she might have even wanted some of that read into the record, and maybe we can do that towards the end. There were a couple relevant parts that I think would be good to just, maybe not the whole thing, but at least part of it. But, actually, maybe I'll just do that right now, since we're talking about it. So, the part, really, she was, so she was writing on behalf of PIE, which I think is, oh, it's Partners in Education for Montpelier Roxbury Public Schools. And she was mostly in this letter emphasizing coordination between the city and the school district, and just breaking down silos in general, like, having lots of communication and partnership across groups. And she wanted to note that the Partners in Education were ready to help meet some needs, and those included childcare support, meal prep, distribution, financial assistance, noting that they have a great track record for fundraising, emotional and social support, curriculum support, communication support, grassroots community organizing. And then, she also brought up this idea of some kind of a task force that may be something that we want to revisit. But I just wanted to make sure that that was out there. She had a really lovely closing paragraph also, but I'll let you read that. In any case, where were we? We were talking about going across
Connecting with the schools.
Connecting with the schools. And Lauren, was there anything else you wanted to add?
I think that was it for now. I think there's a couple ideas you might talk about.
Okay. And Adrian, do you want to add anything? And if you do, you should come up to this microphone.
To the mic, to the table, if you dare get that close to us.
I'll move over here.
Oh, you guys sit there?
No, just
We just wanted to make sure you were distanced from us.
That has been disinfected.
Okay. I actually came
If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Adrian Branley. I own Olavita in town on St. Street. And I'm here because Stephen Witterker had approached me yesterday and emailed me again today about an idea, and he has since left, so I don't really feel comfortable speaking in his place, but I can just say that he approached me with the idea that there's a possibility that maybe Meals on Wheels needs help, or the homeless population needs help with providing food. And there are some businesses open in town, so maybe there could be a collaboration. And I'm willing to help with that, and that's why I showed up tonight. Certainly would not be able to donate my time or the food, given the fact that business is pretty dismal at the moment. But in an effort to keep my business open, I would be willing to subsidize and give help if it's needed. But there was a report earlier at the meeting that Meals on Wheels is comfortable with where they're at right now, so maybe they don't even need help.
We will always take help. I just put that out there. They feel comfortable in the staff that they have to continue to provide that service at the level that they've been providing it, but as soon as people start getting sick, and as you may or may not know, the community may or may not know, is a lot of the people who volunteer for that service are vulnerable populations themselves.
I see.
So, right now, we're okay, but that can change any second. So, we are actively always looking for help in Meals on Wheels.
So, there's Meals on Wheels, and there's also, like, the community lunches. And again, that's volunteers that are preparing those lunches. And I think what Steve started to say, in the chaos of it all, was perhaps, the idea might be we could purchase food from
Yes.
the restaurants and provide those lunches, that way, so that people didn't have to come in to do the preparation. I think that's worth talking about.
Sure. And I'd be willing to help with that, provided that my business is still open. And, you know, that's changeable daily, so, anyway. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, I have a few ideas that I wanted, oh, yes, Dan?
Sorry, I had one additional thought that I forgot to mention before, and that's, I just wonder if there shouldn't be some type of encouragement for people to walk downtown. And this goes to, I think, the public safety issue, which is with these businesses closed and with fewer normal foot traffic, you know, it does create sort of opportunities, whereas if people were encouraged to walk within safe social distancing, can you hear better? Okay. Safe social distancing. But I think we should be encouraging people to walk through our city, to keep it populated, so it doesn't become a ghost town full of opportunities.
Cameron?
So, something exciting that I touched on a little bit in the memo that we're doing is the rec center is coming up with a really fun, we think, program where we're going to do, like, a scavenger hunt that encourages folks to see a lot of our downtown and our other rec facilities, like our paths and the parks. So, we're hoping that we can get that information out soon to sort of encourage that kind of behavior. We know it's not the answer, the only answer, but it's part of it, so.
Great.
Thanks, sorry.
No, it's awesome. So, all of my suggestions, except one, are really related to the city finances. And so, I'm very interested to see sort of where we stand and how much flexibility we have. I mean, this is unprecedented, and so I don't mind doing things that are unusual. And so, keeping that in mind, I would like to know, first of all, to free up money on our end, what is our flexibility to push off purchases, particularly like from our equipment plan? Or thinking about our expenditures we have yet to have happen in the FY '20 fiscal year regarding capital projects? If there's any flexibility there. And then, two, considering the same for FY '21, what are the essential, sort of like, must-do projects? And what can be, can be put off? I think this is an okay time to delay things, knowing that we might have to make up for it later. But I'm particularly picking on capital improvements, or capital money, as well as equipment, and I know that's technically the same pot, but because those are more or less one-time expenditures, and we could potentially shift our equipment plan back a year, knowing that at least this kind of crisis is going to be at least relatively short-lived in the fiscal year sort of scale. So, I would like to, I would like to know how much we can free up, just generally. And then, with that in mind, I have a couple of proposals for what to do with that. One is, so one is dealing with residents who may not be eligible for unemployment, particularly self-employed folks. I would love to see if we can put together some kind of a, like, miniature, like, jobs program, which is to say, could we pay people, even as slim as it is, some kind of temporary work to pick up litter, or paint over graffiti, or do trail work, or clean out invasive species? There's all kinds of things that we could be exploring. And I know that that wouldn't help everyone, but it might be valuable to a few people. And in the end, we may decide to not do that, and that's okay, but I just want to put that out there as an idea. And then, the second thing is regarding businesses. I know particularly the first-floor retail and restaurants are nervous right now, and understandably so. I would love to explore, oh, actually, first of all, I would like to know how much we collect in taxes from first-floor retail and restaurants. And then, you know, compare that with the money we freed up. But looking at if it would be possible to create a program in which landlords could opt in to a program in which they reduce their rent or waive their rent, either for one month or for the duration, we can figure out what details make sense there, to be basically matched, potentially by, by what I would consider like a tax break. But I know we can't technically, like, this body doesn't have the authority to abate taxes. I don't know if that extends to tax credits. I would have thought that that would come to us, but I'm surrounded by smarter people. So, happy to, or if there's other mechanisms we can use there to get money basically back to landlords so that they can reduce rent or waive rent, particularly for first-floor, ground-floor retail and restaurants. I know I'm going kind of fast. I have one more suggestion, but it's a little weirder. So, Dan?
Well, I just, I mean, I think that the whole idea of taxes, because it may require some sort of legislative authority, but that strikes me as one of those great ideas that would be best if the landlords themselves bought into it or felt that that would be productive, as opposed to, you know, I think that's a great tool for Jay to take with his, as an idea in his box, to say, if this works, let's refine and champion that kind of thing.
I've been on the phone today with four major landlords in town, and they have all expressed interest in this.
Great.
Yep. Now, to be fair, the money that we have available, that we can free up, may not compare to rent for a month. But even if we can do some portion, that may still be worth talking about. There are details that would obviously have to be set up for that, but we can, I mean, it's not going to happen right, you know, we're not going to necessarily decide that tonight. Also, well, any other comments on either of those ideas? Either some kind of like a miniature jobs program or rent relief directed through landlords?
So, at this point, you're just saying, collect all the information? Let's see, let's see how big that pot of money is?
Yes.
And then decide from there?
Yes.
But conceptually going forward, is it worth considering, right?
Right, I guess that's
And I would say both are worth considering, but, yeah.
Okay.
Once we see the details.
Yeah, because I don't know those numbers either. I don't know that anyone does right now, so. On those two things, yes, Donna?
Thank you. I like the idea, but I do caution us, this may go on for months, people. So, I like the idea of looking at creating a pot, but not being too quick of how it goes out, until we have a more holistic view.
Okay. Point well taken. Lauren? Yeah, Lauren, go ahead.
I agree with the comments so far. I think, I think they're interesting ideas that we could definitely explore and look into. It seems like part of that, maybe to Donna's point, of looking at what's a stimulus package and other things that might be coming out of the federal government.
So, Lauren, you kind of cut out there, but I think I know where you were going to go with it.
The city, or maybe all the businesses later that could be paid back or something, but just kind of being nimble of opportunities might come up, and maybe we can be more, you know, quick in getting stuff out from the federal government, and that alone might help float our businesses, or.
So, are you, so you're suggesting So, you're suggesting that, together with, with the suggestion, we also look at potential money that may be coming from the feds or the state, specifically for small business relief?
Yeah, just look at the full picture of what could come out, and, you know, maybe have different options, depending on what ends up being available. But including, as you suggested, looking at what the city alone might be able to do, but maybe we have peers or different things that we could do if different pots of money become available through state or federal programs.
Great. Jay, anything to add to that?
No, I agree with Lauren. I think that looking at the state, federal budget. I agree with her.
Jack, anything to add?
I agree with most of what I've heard. I like the idea of figuring out how much money we can flex in our budget. And I agree with Donna's point that, you know, given the fact that we can assume that a vaccine may be available in a minimum of a year to a year and a half, I don't think we can predict.
Yeah. Fair, fair enough. The only other idea I had, which really pertains to Jack in this conversation mostly, is because, you know, I'm thinking about the groups of people that are, that might use some help. You know, I was thinking about businesses and residents, you know, the underemployed right now, but also just people, just renters. And so, Jack, I'm wondering if you can comment on the possibility of using Housing Trust Fund money for anything regarding relief for renters at this point? Jack, are you still on the phone?
I just got disconnected, and I just called back.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
I'm going to repeat what I just said, then.
Okay, sorry.
No worries. This suggestion mostly pertains to you, as our rep on the Housing Trust Fund. So, just considering financially vulnerable people during this time, and one of those groups is renters, wondering about the possibility of using any Housing Trust Fund money to address, well, renters, but really any housing-related issues at this point. Go ahead, Jack. Or maybe not. Maybe I'll just let that one hang for now. And actually, there's one other
I feel it is.
Oh, no. Everyone needs to mute their phones.
And I'm going to suggest that we talk offline, because I'm not hearing anything that you're saying.
Okay. Yeah, no worries, we'll do that.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
I think what you say was vulnerable.
Okay. All right.
We will have different technology next meeting.
Great.
Promise?
Maybe even better.
Maybe. It will be different.
Promise, promise.
Okay. So, at this point, this is all that we had regularly planned. Any other comments folks want to make at this point? Connor, go ahead.
Just bouncing off your last idea there, just looking at other pots of money. You know, it's out of our control at this point, but is it worth reaching out to the Montpelier Development Corporation, or the community fund there we've given money to recently? As this is sort of a core part of their mission, to keep downtown alive here and everything. But maybe rather than bringing, you know, new projects in at this point, the focus behind But maybe rather than bringing, you know, new projects in at this point, the focus behind keeping the lights on in some of the shops here. So it might be worth a conversation with them, since we've appropriated $100,000 for the next fiscal year.
Correct. So the Community Fund, of course, has already committed the funds for our next year's budget. Those are the wards that go to nonprofits. We have been in contact with MDC, and I think Montpelier Alive is as well, about ways that they can assist them.
Could we ask them to come to our next meeting and tell us their plans?
Sure.
Particularly because I think it's important that they hear from us that, I mean, I know we are not their board.
I understand.
But, but that, you know, we expect that they will be creatively helping to maintain and, and that, you know, if they need to assign a person to be in charge of overseeing that, then fair, but redirect the rest of the money to keeping downtown alive.
And I guess I'd add, we have businesses in the community that are non-downtown that are also vital partners.
Yes, yes. Fair, fair. Okay.
And this is Jay. I think that's a great idea. How does this thing come to the next meeting?
I'm just going to toss in one thing here, and I, it's, you know, there's always got to be the one bureaucrat in the room, right? So that's me. I appreciate the ideas that we have already begun the process of trying to identify funds, budget funds, as the mayor recommended. I would remind you that we've got to balance that against potential lost revenues. So, you know, we free up $200,000 or $300,000 in projects, and we're going to lose $200 or $300 in local option tax. We're still no, we're still not ahead. So just keep that in mind, that it's, it's a two-way street. So we're trying to do that analysis. We obviously would love to be able to provide the assistance that we need, and we'll be looking to do that. But just, it's not, we've got to look at both sides of the equation.
Connor, go ahead.
Yeah, just along those lines, both Bill and Cameron, if anything approaching, I think layoffs finds its way into like a rescission plan or anything, if we could just get a lot of notice on that, because I know personally, I don't want to be in the business of putting more people on the unemployment line, and I think our staff is thin as it is. We need all hands on deck here, so that would be our last case resort, in my mind, it's.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree as well. Okay. Dan?
You know, I guess one thing that maybe is a final thought is that, you know, on the call today with the homelessness task force, you know, there was an undercurrent that people are starting to have anxiety about what's going on. And I don't think it would be a bad idea, it's a double negative, I think it would be a good idea if we, as the city, you know, the mayor, the council, the manager, the clerk, you know, the staff, send a letter to the public, you know, reassuring them of a lot of what we've talked about tonight, letting them know that, but also defining what we're here to do, which is, is not to provide some of these social services, but we're here to make sure that the core services are here and that we, the water will be clean, the sewer will be treated, you know, we will continue to provide public safety and fire safety, you know, these functions will continue and that we, you know, continue to have these underpinnings, which, you know, are not the most glamorous thing, but the difference between clean water coming out of your faucet and not is between civilization and not in a lot of ways. And so I think maybe sending a letter telling, telling the people and citizens of Montpelier, you know, what we're doing and that we have their back on these core issues, I think is really, really important.
I agree. I, well, so Bill and I have been talking about having more frequent communication with the public as well, but I like this idea of having like a, kind of like a comprehensive letter about just what you're describing.
Right.
And also maybe having some direction about, you know, if you're elderly, here are, you know, some resources. If you have kids who need to be fed, here are resources. And something maybe that we could just mail to every resident, potentially.
Yeah. I mean, I think in some ways, that's a, that's a great, that's a great idea. And I applaud your and Bill's work, like Friday with the press conference, I mean, the, you know, the public availability, because I think those are important hallmarks, because especially as we become more socially isolated throughout this, you know, unlike other crises where we can all come together and burn the bright, lights brightly in the pubs and such, you know, this is forcing us to be alone. And so more communication like this that you can do and that we can do, I think is important.
Yeah.
That was great, that livestream?
Yeah.
It was?
Cool. Okay. Well, I appreciate everyone's willingness and-
Can I, can I ask one last thing?
Sure.
As we think ahead, I heard Lauren mention, you know, maybe more frequent meetings to, regardless of the technology, to deal with these things. Maybe we could talk about this next week, but I'm wondering, we had a few things like continued ordinance review and some of that stuff. Is that stuff we should just be not focused on so we can keep our focus on this? Or do you want to keep going business as usual? So maybe something to think about. And, you know, you and I could talk about that. Obviously, we may have some key issues, but even then, if we have to do presentations, that might be a little tricky, but we, you know, someone might, maybe we could figure out how to do them remotely on the screen or something, but so.
I think if there is, I imagine there will be essential business that we have to get done. For example, we need to probably sign-
Right, oh yeah.
-documents, so, or if there are other items like, like that, that we have to do, fair enough. What are other people's thoughts on the sort of the, well, particularly about, like, let's say, next week's meeting? I'm also open to meeting more frequently if there is substance to talk about. Like, I don't know how long it will take staff to come up with some answers for some of the things we raised tonight. If you think it will take a week, then maybe that's not logical to meet sooner, but otherwise-
Well, we had next week scheduled anyway, of course.
Yeah. What are, what are your thoughts? Do you want to meet sooner and/or do you, what, how do you feel about moving on with like things, you know, our norms or, you know, other stuff? Yeah. Go ahead, Dan.
I'll speak first, only, you keep looking at, that's okay, it's where we're sitting. But what I would say is something like the norms, I don't feel that they are as critical at a juncture like this. I mean, maybe we can have them if we have time, because they do sort of form some of the underpinning of us, but I don't feel a need to meet before next week. I think next week, we do have to think about, you know, sort of where we sit and whether it makes sense, you know. Bill and Cameron can do a lot, because they have the executive function. So it isn't like, we're not like a select board where we have to meet, otherwise the town doesn't fit in. But then, but then, I think the other thing is, you know, this type of meeting is really important to get some essential business done, but it's also the public forum where people can express concern.
Dan's just not hearable online.
Okay. I will repeat everyone to put your phone on mute when you're not speaking. Thank you. I don't think that's it. It's easy to-
Is it, I'll try and do it with the mic.
His voice keeps bubbling in relationship to the mic.
Okay. I've moved the mic a little bit. How's this? The point I was making, just a quick recap maybe, is I don't think we need to meet before next week, because I think we've already discussed a lot of this. And the second point that I was making was that, you know, the, the meeting isn't necessarily critical, because we have these two full-time executives in, in the city manager and assistant city manager who can do the business of the day-to-day of the city. So unlike a select board that might have to meet just simply to do some of the business, some of that is off our plate. But I do think that these meetings are important as public dissemination opportunities for the public to express any concerns or issues that they have, as well as for us to communicate to the public and to say, hey, this is what we're doing. And for, you know, these kind of robust discussions that I think ultimately make people feel better, because it shows that this isn't just haphazard, and that there's some thinking and planning and process and good minds and hard, hard shoulders at work here. And so that would be my sense is that, you know, I think we can probably strike a balance somewhere between, we may have to meet more than twice a month, but I don't feel like it's as necessary as, you know, it's not like we have to now meet every week, because we have to deal with these crises, because I think the executives can. And so, you know, I think we can have that mixture of essential business, moderate business, and then sort of crisis business.
One last question, and this is-
Well, actually, before, anyone else want to weigh in on the question of meeting more frequently? And then there was one other part.
Sort of going on with the ordinance reviews and things like that.
Oh, going on, right, not, right, not essential things. Connor?
Yeah, I think I pretty much agree with Dan there. You know, I don't, I don't think the public's too interested in us poring through ancient ordinances at this point. And even something like the council retreat, which I hope we can do if we have time, but I think that should play second to making sure we keep everybody afloat here during this difficult time. So, you know, I think most of us would be willing to meet as frequently as we need to. We also don't want these meetings to take up a lot of Bill and Cameron's time when they need to be doing other, other things as well. So, yep, that's where I'm at.
Donna, any thoughts on this?
Excuse me, head on YouTube. I think we should only meet if we need to. If we need an extra meeting and we absolutely have things that need it sooner than later, I'd look for Bill's guidance on those items and yours. Otherwise, I think we should try to commit to be as timely as we can and as brief as we can in these phone calls. Thank you.
Thanks. Lauren?
Yeah, I generally agree with people's sentiments. I mean, I do wonder if making this date for weekly check-ins, you know, at our normal council Wednesday times for now and reassessing that. I'm almost thinking, even if it's just a quick check-in of, here's what's happening, here's what the city's doing, and just having the chance for public input as more and more of this kind of plays out, like what are people's needs? Are there gaps in services? Are there issues that are coming up? And even if it's really a brief meeting, great, but just giving both the public a venue to hear what's going on and to get input from people seems valuable.
Yeah.
Like, not more often than weekly, but.
Okay. Jack?
I agree with what Donna and Dan said. I also have heard from people that things like the video that the manager did to put up very quickly is a summary of what the city's doing are useful. It might be good to do more of that kind of thing.
Great. Jay?
Yeah, I just agree. The more, I think the more we can connect and connect with the community, the better. So, I hope that looks with meaning. You know, I'm open.
You know, it's occurring to me too, that it feels really pressing right now, and there are things to be decided. But sooner or later, like, we're going to figure out those things. And, and then it might actually be nice to talk about anything else. And, and actually, for that, you know, as long as we are dealing with what needs to be done, if there is space and time for our, with our regular meetings, it might actually be nice to talk about something that feels low pressure. We can, we can talk about this later, but, you know, and I'm thinking about like ordinance review, you know what I mean? But in any case, happy to take anybody's input on that as we go on. Sounds like we're in general agreement, and that, that's, that's pretty good. Bill, you had another question?
I just had a, this is really a logistical question, and there's no right answer, but it's good for us to know to help prepare. At last week's meeting, we talked about these meetings going forward, and at that point, the general sentiment was, we're going to try to hold these meetings in person. And then, but a lot's changed in the world since then as well. And then tonight, it seemed like most people wanted to call in, and if, if the idea is we're going to, these are going to be primarily call-in remote meetings, then we will really try to figure, you know, we'll try to configure tech one way. If it's going to be generally the intent is people will be here, and there might be one call-in person, then that's a different thing. So it would just be helpful to know what, what the collective intent is, and then we can take it from there.
I, well, so I'll speak first here. I would prefer remote. People can come if they want, but as long as school is closed, I would rather not be here. But that's, that's, you know, me, my risk aversion. Other thoughts? I'm just going to go in that same order. Dan?
Yeah, I, I understand the risk averseness. I just think that these are certain meetings that are best conducted in person. And, you know, I understand, we can probably get better technology, but it's, it's always just hard when you can't read the facial expressions of the person to understand if you're connecting with them or if you're just droning on, which I maybe do.
Would, would video conferencing help?
I, you know, I'll obviously, I think this is an issue where if the, if the council decides one way, I'm comfortable with it. It's just if you ask me what my preference is, I, I think that this is important business, and I'm willing to make that, that risk, but not judging in any way, shape or form anybody else's.
Interesting. All good. Connor?
I think I'm the same. I don't, I don't want to push people outside their comfort zones or anything. If they don't feel comfortable coming in, I, I don't do well on the telephone meetings there, so my preference is to come in in person, but totally understand it.
Okay. Donna?
You're up to you, Donna, if you're talking.
Might be-
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I prefer to be in person. I have a bit of a sore throat, so I, was the only time I, reason I stayed home this time. I prefer it in person. It just never works as well. That's my preference.
Okay. Lauren?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think meetings are always better in person. I do, I don't know, again, seeing how things are playing out, I think it might become more and more like we'll need to or want to be doing it remotely. So I do think having the technology, I mean, and it, for the counselors too, is one thing, but, you know, like most people are being told to stay home, so to ensure that there's no ability for people to participate remotely, just it seems like that technology, having it feasible for people to really do that for a while personally, but.
Uh, Jack?
I, I'm like everyone else. I think I have a strong, or most people, I have a strong preference for being there in person. If I get a negative test result today, I would expect to be there next week. I think, but I do think we need to be prepared to do a better job of doing these meetings remotely, because I think it's inevitable that some people are likely going to need to be participating remotely.
Yes.
Yep. And Jack?
You're probably right.
Yeah, I'm, I'd have to be there in person. I do think that, you know, if there's, if there's a second choice, it's by video. I also think we have a responsibility that if we need to have, you know, if we're urging our city to have social isolation and separation that we're, you know, doing that ourselves. So I think that if we can find responsible ways to be able to still hold a meeting and show some leadership there, I think that that's important. So, yeah, those are the two best preferences. I think by phone is just, it's tricky and problematic. I think that there's technology that we could use for video that so we can at least each other and have those cues, that would be really helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, fair enough. I think if we do meet in person- I think if we do meet in person, I'm just going to say, I don't know that the distances are enough. I'm glad we're all spaced out here, and I think if we were, if more of us were in attendance, we would just need to figure out that configuration. So, I'm open to that. Yeah, so, right, we need to definitely have some better technology as well. Okay. Any other final thoughts?
One thing just to say is, like...
I just want to thank the staff for their efforts, and it's not their fault, we're just not there yet, so, just appreciation for setting this up for what we do have.
Yes. Agreed. Connor?
Agreed.
Yeah, along those lines, I don't think people can necessarily see at home, but we have every department head in the audience right now socially distancing themselves, but I think if there's any question that the city is open for business, you know, just look at the dedication of our staff here. I got the clerk and Bill and Cameron have been working off the hook, so, really appreciate all their efforts.
Yeah.
I think we should applaud.
Well, and I also just want to thank any of the public who took the time to watch or listen to this meeting and just, you know, stay grounded and encourage people to reach out if they need anything. There are lots of people who want to help, and we have great, we have great nets for people, you know, if you need help, so. And I think your suggestion, Dan, is great. We'll be in touch more frequently, especially as, you know, we're a little, a little more separated from each other these days, so. Okay, any other comments from department heads? Okay, all right, well, thank you, everyone, and hopefully you can get to bed on time. So, we'll consider the meeting adjourned, 8:47.